.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. Okay, do we have any amendments to the agenda? We do have one amendment. We are removing the duplex rezoning, which is PC 2011-10 and ZBA 2011-02. The petitioner asked to have that removed. Any other amendments? Chris?
Under consent, I'd like to pull number four, Public Works 2011-57, to the Public Works Committee.
Any other amendments? On Public Works. All those in favor of the changes, say aye.
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 Opposed? We did have a presentation this evening for an Eagle Scout, but I don't believe the Eagle Scout is here. We'll see if they show up. We'll take a break and do a presentation if they show up. Then we'll put it back on the agenda for two weeks. Do we have any public carries tonight? Do we have any citizen comment tonight? Jerry, please state your name for the record and sign in over there, please.
Hi, my name is Jerry Bannister. I am the Republican nominee for Tenda County reporter, and I wanted to stop by and introduce myself. If the position does become created, which would take a no vote on the referendum question on March 20th, I hope to be the reporter in December 2012, and I look forward to working with all the villages in the county in the preparation of their class subdivision and that type of thing. Obviously, I wouldn't have a vote on any of those, but one of the issues that does come quite frequently in the reporter's office is the way subdivisions are created and named with the streets and the lot numbers and so forth, it can become quite confusing when the data entry process starts to take place. And as a reporter, I would hope to come to the areas, villages, and towns in the county and give them input to make that process more easy and streamlined down the road so that we're not putting as much garbage in, so we're not looking as for as much garbage out. And I hope it all goes well for me. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them right now or after a meeting. And I have a website up here at gannister.com.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizen comment? If not, I would like to circle back to the presentation. It looks like our Eagle Scout, Brandon Barret, arrived. Brandon, would you please come forward?
Always my pleasure to give a certificate of recognition to an Eagle Scout. There's not many of us out there. Let me bring your certificate, then maybe you can talk a little bit about your Eagle practice. This is a certificate of recognition from the mayor and city council of the United City of Yorkville who present this certificate to Brandon Barret in recognition of his achievement to the rank as Eagle Scout through Boy Scouts of Merit Youth Program of Character Development and Value-Based Leadership. Presented this 10th day of January 2012.
Could you tell us a little bit about your Eagle practice? Have you ever donated, get some netbooks?
Yeah, I worked with the food pantry, and I raised funds to buy six netbooks. And then those netbooks go back to children in Yorkville schools, children who didn't have access to a computer at home so they could use it on homework projects and whatnot. And it's been successful. I'm glad to be able to educate children in our community because it's really, really well.
That's a good accomplishment. I think only 1% or 2% of all employees who enter Boy Scouts make the rank of Eagle. So it's a good accomplishment. Again, congratulations. Brandon, do you want to bring your mother up for the picture? You want to? One, this one I think is right here. Yeah. Okay, next we will, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved, second.
Roll call on the consent agenda.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Wlshuski?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Muddens?
Aye.
Buckhouser?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Okay, we have a couple sets of minutes for approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council for December 13th, 2011, and December 27th, 2011, as presented.
So moved.
Second. Comments, questions, corrections on the minutes? George?
I was not present during the December 27th meetings that, because I was on vacation, but there is a correction on page three of five. It says Alderman Gilson stated, and there's no way I stated, I wasn't here. So that might be somebody else's.
That would be Mayor Golinski.
Okay.
Any other comments? Rose?
I have a few comments on December 13th minutes. Page two of seven, under the mayor's report, the third paragraph, the second sentence, asks for the maximum instead of majority. And then on page four, the second paragraph, it's the third sentence from the bottom, and I stated whether it is county or city of Yorkville money, collectively, it is the taxpayers' money.
Your turn.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, two minor things. This is December 27th at the bottom of page three. The second last paragraph near the bottom, we were talking about the committees, and I said something, and according to this, I said if a vote is not appreciated in committee, I don't know if I said appreciated, I just wanted to maybe listen to the tape and see what I actually said, I think, respected or something. I don't know. Did I? Okay, if I did, I did, and it sounds stupid, so maybe I can edit it. And then the last paragraph on page three, it says that, my note says there are no obligations by taking no action. It was regarding the IDOT, and I think it said that we would have an obligation by taking no action. Actually, we would have no legal obligation by taking no action. As us taking an action, taking action would cause us to have an obligation, so it's actually flipped.
That was the bottom of page three?
Bottom of page three, last paragraph, right near the bottom.
Okay.
We have no obligation by taking no action.
Correct.
Okay.
Lerk? Yes, Mr. Mayor. On December 27th minutes, page four, third paragraph from the top, and it would be the fourth sentence from the bottom, says if someone wants to step forward, and it should be paid, the city share rather than paid. And then the very last sentence in that same paragraph, I believe it should read, "We'll support sending it back to committee," which is a little different than what's written there. That's all. Chris?
December 13th, page four of seven, paragraph, or second paragraph, fifth line, in the middle, it should read, "A policy of reducing our fees." Page four, second paragraph, fifth line, should read, "Policy of reducing our fees."
Anyone else? Jesse?
The December 13th minutes to a seven, under the tax levy, third paragraph, fourth line, Alderman Gilson agreed with Alderman Spears to reduce the ordinance, I believe that was to reduce the levy. And then the next paragraph, it's not very clear who made the motion that was seconded by Alderman Colosimo. The way I'm reading it, it sounds like Attorney Orr made the motion. Can we clarify that? It was page two of seven, under tax levy, the last sentence before the roll call on the motion.
A city attorney Orr stated Alderman Spears' motion is to reduce what was before. Is that your question?
Yeah, I don't, wanted to clarify what was...
It was Alderman Spears' motion, I was just...
But what was the motion?
The motion was to reduce what was before the city council by $50,000. So the total amount of the levy, she was saying pull it down by another 50.
Because it has said, and then it's seconded by, it just didn't say Alderman, I don't know. It just didn't, it seemed confusing for future reference.
Second motion to be made to reduce the total levy to 50, seconded it. Yeah, I understand what you're saying now.
Maybe after that semicolon, you can just insert, "Motion made by Alderman Spears," and then it'll say, "Seconded by Alderman Colosimo."
Yeah. It needs clarification.
Just so it's clear.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other corrections on minutes? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended? Aye.
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 Moving on to mayor's reports. One thing to ask before we start, does anyone have questions on the collective bargaining agreement? Do we need an executive session before voting on this, or is everyone prepared to vote on it?
I know we just got the packet, Mayor, so has anything changed other than what we've discussed in executive session, or is anything different in that packet?
Or we could put this at the end, too, after executive session, if anyone wants to talk about it again.
Why don't we do that?
Okay. We'll bring this back after executive session. Okay, fine. Moving on to River Road Bridge. I will entertain a motion to approve a local agency agreement for federal participation between the United City of Yorkville and the State of Illinois Department of Transportation, and to approve the construction engineering services agreement for federal participation between the United City of Yorkville Engineering Enterprises, Inc., for the River Road Bridge project, and authorize a mayor and city clerk to execute both agreements. So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions on this one? George?
Can you review again how the city's portion, the 20% that will be responsible for, is budgeted and will be paid for in due course of time?
Sure. The actual cash flow is going to be covered by the state. So the state is actually going to be paying the contractors and coordinating the payment of all the invoices. And similar to Route 47, they will be sending us a bill for our portion of the project as the project progresses. So given that we do expect still a March bid letting, we don't expect any invoices to come from the state until next fiscal year. So all of our invoices from the state should come in May through probably November, December of next year, this calendar year, next fiscal year, and maybe even into the beginning part of 2013. So we do have money anticipated to be budgeted in the citywide capital fund. So, you know, we haven't rolled out the budget yet, but I am projecting that we'll be able to cover it in the general fund and still have a surplus next year.
So the invoices that roll in, in 2012, we have that money budgeted as well?
There won't be any invoices in 2012.
None at all?
In fiscal year 12. Calendar year 2012, yes, there will be invoices. I'm projecting that we'll be able to pay them. Is it going to be easy or without discussion? I'm sure not. But, you know, in order to make the state's expedited time schedule, we have to have the agreement approved tonight.
I just have a hard time. I think this road needs to be done. I, we know it needs to be done, and the arrangement we have is good. I just, I hate approving something that we don't have any concrete budget for. And that's, to me, is difficult to do. And I, I'm really torn over this because I know it needs to be done. I hope we come up with the money, but if we don't, then it happens.
It's a good question.
Want to take the bridge back?
Well, I mean, then they take our motor fuel tax back. They'll take our motor fuel tax.
Yeah, that's the answer. That's the answer.
They'll take all our motor fuel tax.
Yeah, they'll sequester motor fuel tax and then local government dispersments. Yeah.
Just sticking with the budget issue, initially, we anticipated $400,000, and it seems like it's going to be $484,000. $84,000 is obviously a big chunk of money. I mean, we're still, you still feel that there's going to be enough wiggle room there that we're going to be able to work this in and get that paid.
Yeah, even last year, we had budgeted for a decent surplus next year that it looks like we'll still be projecting and will materialize. The next couple years after that are the ones that get dicey. So, and that's what we'll have to discuss. But, you know, I looked at this and said, you know, if we plug this in, where are we at for next year and the year after? And next year, we're still running a surplus, but the year after, we'll have to make some policy decisions.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Cut?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Muddens?
Aye.
Wlshuski?
Aye.
Gilson?
Present.
Teeling?
Aye.
Buckhouser?
Aye.
Okay, next we have a Safe Ross to School update, and I believe we are looking for some direction. And Brad or Bargen wants to take this one?
I'm looking at you around 6 feet, sorry.
Yes, back in early December, we met with IDOT, federal officials, in the Safe Ross to School project. If you recall, the city was awarded $230,000 grants about a year and a half ago. Project progressed a little bit, but we wanted to sit down with the state and discuss some things with them. Purpose of the meeting was to get direction from them. We'd identified that the grant funds were not, there weren't enough grant funds to build all of the sidewalks that were identified in the original application. So we wanted to sit down with those officials and discuss that. And basically, the draft letter that you see in the packet is the result of that meeting and some of the discussion we had with those officials. Basically, they gave us a few suggestions or alternatives, and what we have to do is put together a letter, send it back to the state, and then officially respond to our requests. So basically, we outlined three options, and guess what we're looking for tonight potentially is some direction and approval, I guess, on submitting the letter so we can get some additional comment. The options were outlined, as noted in the letter. First option was to request some additional funds to construct everything that was identified within the original application. That actually came as a suggestion from them that there might be additional funds available, so we put that in in our response letter. So we did that. The second item has to do with reducing the sidewalk width to four feet. They would prefer to see five feet, that's their request, but in order to save some dollars and try to keep things tighter, we would try to reduce it to four feet and then also stay within the budget range. So if we do that, stay with the $230,000, there's definitely some streets or some sidewalk that we would not be able to install. So those were identified, we just wanted to blossom, that was acceptable as part of the program. And then the last option was, again, if we had to stay with the five feet, then, you know, this is what we would be able to do, stay within the budget constraints. So again, upon conclusion of the meeting we had with those officials, they suggested basically coming up with these three alternatives, going back to the city and getting some direction, and then in turn providing this documentation to them so they can formally respond to that. So kind of a little rough outline, it's probably been long since this subject has been brought in front of the council, so I'd be happy to work with any questions.
It is notable, too, that we had asked originally to reduce the scope of the sidewalks in width in certain areas, and we were told no at the time. And now here they are, saying that that would be perfectly acceptable because we don't have enough money to complete all the sidewalks we thought we could, so.
Yeah, it was just a plan that a little bit, there has been a change in how the Safe Ross to School program has been managed. It was managed under a different department group than, you know, with an IDOT. It's now been transferred. The program has a lot more flexibility to it, including the width of the sidewalk can actually take sometimes off in the original application. Previous years, that would not be possible, but as it sits today, there's quite a bit more flexibility.
True.
Well, with that said, then, I think, since we have a new set of eyes looking at it in Springfield, I think that we go with option one and ask them to provide us more money. Let's get some of our tax dollars back into Yorkville. It's not going to cost us any more money. Let's get some of our tax dollars back in Yorkville and have them pay for the sidewalks as originally proposed. And then if they say no to that, then we can look at other options. But why, why skip that option if there's a possibility of them paying in full for all the sidewalks before we start cutting out sidewalks? That would be my recommendation.
George?
I would agree. Why would we do it any other way than that? I mean, we don't want to give them all three options because they'll take option three, it's the easy way out, and then they don't have to pay the extra dollars.
Well, they're the ones that's kept it asking for more, too. So they wanted us to lay out all of these options, actually. So...
Done.
My guarantee the money's going to be there, right? There's certain policy decisions and steps they have to follow, there's certain federal procedures and state procedures they have to follow. So, yes, it's not that straightforward, but this is how we suggested we put it together and provide some personal facts back to them to make it respond to this.
And we didn't want to expand the scope of the grant and incur additional expenses, although they'd be our, we're stacking city council direction.
Mary? Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to add that in some of these old neighborhoods, the five-foot sidewalks just are too much, especially when you're putting them in places where there's never been a sidewalk. And I insist that we put four-footers in there if all possible because we've already gotten some complaints, and it just makes sense. Especially when you look at the map, a lot of these new ones are newer than your school. So it's not like you're putting a five-footer in, it's leading up to a school. These are just old neighborhoods. So I really think we need to go with the four-footers here.
So would that be a hybrid, then? We do the four-footers, but keep the option one where they pay for everything, just reduce the size of the sidewalk?
So we want four-footers, but we don't want to remove all these ones, so we need more money.
Well, yeah, I think the, we generally have to go with these three options, but I guess what we need tonight is approval of the second letter. The other thing I'd feel to mention is that the reason why it's brought to the council instead of the committee is that we're under a major time crunch, we're way behind in schedule here. So it was our intention to bring it to the December Public Works Committee meeting, but that, so we apologize for being late to the council.
I want to dito on Alderman Cut, I brought up in Public Works, that the four-foot is more in character of that neighborhood, so.
We certainly agree. It's most likely you'd be able to overcome that earlier in the state, but again, that's something that they need to tell us in response.
Option one, I don't have a problem with, obviously, if we're going to see if they can provide more funds. Option two makes sense, but three, I'd like to remove option three from the letter. If we're going to send it out, give them the two options, but three, I think reduces our scope a little too much. One and two, I'm okay with, but three, I'd like to see cut. Well, I guess, first of all, Mayor Golinski, are we going to take a consensus on what we all want here and then decide on one from a consensus? Or, I mean, obviously, if what we're saying is, if we take a little bit of everybody's opinion here and put it together into one consensus, why not do exactly what we talked about, hybrid it, do option one and just change the five-foot to four-foot? And then we're all, we're all getting, we're all getting the best of both worlds. Keep it there, see what happens. If they say no, then we come back and, and look at the other options.
I concur. So we're adding four-foot sidewalks and more money?
Yep.
Right? Sounds like we have a consensus. Good enough, Brad? Okay, Public Works Committee, there was an item pulled off of consent agenda, and that is the minimum fines for adjudication.
Bear with me, and let me get to it. Okay. Public Works 2011-57, and it was minimum fines for ordinance violations. I mean, what do you...
Well, we make a motion in a second, then whatever these things are.
See if we have a motion here.
It was a consent, so it's probably, there's probably no written motion.
No.
No motion, so you want me to...
Yes, we, I'll retain the motion to approve an ordinance establishing minimum fines for ordinance violations. Someone to move in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions?
My comments on this, as we discussed, we made some changes to some of the fines that are on here. In the chart, the fines that were modified in section 5-3-12, those modifications should be part of 5-3-600, the drug paraphernalia. Those modifications need to be flipped. They were supposed to be part of drug paraphernalia. If we can correct that, I'm okay with the ordinance. A one-for-one swap.
One-for-one swap.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, was the reverse?
Yes.
Yes, the higher fines for the...
Drug paraphernalia takes the higher fines.
Than public urination, yes.
Sounds fair.
Good catch. Is that the only thing?
That is all I have.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Teeling?
As amended.
As amended.
Aye.
Buckhouser?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Muddens?
Aye.
Wlshuski?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Economic Development Committee report.
Mr. Allen, we can make a motion to approve an ordinance adopting a new residential construction incentive program and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
So moved.
Second.
I just came out of EDC with some non-over discussion here and there, some, some concerns. So we decided to bring it, it was a positive vote to bring to city council for everybody's input. Basically, as builders came to us and says, "There's a program that's worked in some other cities, and we thought it's going to be a look at to try, got a lot of big plots sitting there, and we've really got to try something." So basically, the information's there, we're going to $5,000 lawyer of our fees, build this road in $5,000 to potential home buyers.
Now, Aladdin Issier is here, he made a presentation at Economic Development Committee. I'd like to invite him up to speak to this a little bit, maybe before or after we discuss it, but I think it'd be good to hear from Aladdin first. Aladdin, sign in and address the council, please.
My name's Aladdin Nassar. I'm not a stranger to Yorkville. We were a locally-owned home-building company. We built about 500 homes in the Plainfield, Joliet area, and then, in 2004, we invested over $5 million in Yorkville. We purchased 160 acres, near 71 and 47, across from the Harris Forest Preserve, with the intention of developing it for single-family residential construction. And this was in 2004, I think we finished closing on the property in 2005. That's when the writing started becoming a little bit apparent on the wall, that the market was kind of unsustainable. We also have another property in Menucha currently, which is also 160 acres, 379 homes, that was also sitting dormant. We started about a year before Yorkville, the property we had in Yorkville, so we got about 50 homes sold, and then 2008, 2009, and the first part of 2010, we sold a whopping zero homes in those two and a half years. We're a builder who's used to selling between 80 and 100 homes a year, and to go from those numbers, you know, trickle down a little bit in '07, down to zero in '08, '09, and the first part of '10, we, obviously, we thank God we were able to survive, but, you know, just barely, kind of. What turned things around was, last year, actually at the beginning or middle of 2010, the village of Menucha introduced an, they called it an economic stimulus program. The way it would work is that the village would contribute $5,000 to a fund, basically, and then, on top of the building permit, the builder would pay $5,000 additional to that same fund, and then the village would cut the buyers of any new home a check for $10,000 at closing. Actually, you know, right after closing, basically, because of the paperwork, but it proved, when we learned about this program, they obviously reached out to us, we were one of the only builders who survived in Menucha. It's similar to Yorkville on a little bit of a smaller scale, because it's a smaller population, but there were some subdivisions that failed, some big builders who went out of business, who were building there. So when they came out with this program, we took a hard look at our costs as well, and we realized one truth, kind of, and that is that, in today's economy, as a home builder, we're not competing with other home builders, we're competing with the foreclosure market and the short sale distressed properties, in general. So we took a hard look at our costs, at the numbers, and the $10,000, and said, all right, we need to start with a bang if we're really going to reactivate things. So we introduced, we're a little bit different also, as far as builders go. We include a lot of the upgrades that most builders charge extra for, so we don't by any means build a cheap product, other than the price. So, for instance, to launch things back, in September of 2010, so about 16 months ago, we relaunched Arbor Lakes, after sitting for two and a, we had salespeople, we had the models open for those, at least two of those two and a half years, and none of the zero sales. So we relaunched things, I started doing the sales on the weekends, and we offered a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home, with granite countertops, hardwood floors, basements. All of our homes are built to Energy Star standards, Energy Star 3.0 now, actually, which is a very stringent, third-party-tested standard, which is 30 to, or 20 to 30% more efficient than most building codes. That's included in our base price. Fully solid lots, architectural shingles, upgraded cabinets. We throw everything in the kitchen sink, no pun intended, in the house, and that, we offered for $169,900, with, after the $10,000 rebate, cash rebate from the village of Menucha, effectively made it $159,900 for buyers. And we're thankful to say, you know, we've, since then, in those 16 months, we've sold 47 homes in Menucha, after selling zero. I think the total was 41 in 2011, in that one community. And Menucha itself has some challenges, I mean, not a lot of people know about it, not a lot of people have heard about it. The schools are pretty good, so that's a good thing. We don't have any special assessments or anything, so that we have going for us, but we feel, so what we're looking at now is not to develop that 160 acres of the Harris Farm over on 71 and 47, we've got that rented out to a farmer on a long-term lease, returning us 0.01% on our investment every year, which is fine. But what we're looking to do is, there's actually two properties, last week I was focusing on one, but now there's another one that we've been working on, two spots in town, which are 100 developed lots each, and we really think with a program similar to Menucha's, and with a, if at all possible, a permit fee structure, and I provided staff, who provided the EDC, some actual schedules of our last couple of permits, a breakdown of the fees, just for the sake of knowing what's out there. Our last couple of permit fee breakdowns from Menucha, we really think we can exceed the success that we've had in Menucha, because we feel Yorkville is a much more desirable location, you know, better schools, a lot more shopping, which is probably the one thing Menucha's really severely lacking, there's no, I mean, there's a jewel, and that's it, basically. So you got to go to Morris, or Shorewood, Joliet, Plainfield for your shopping there. So we think Yorkville has a lot of things going for it. That alone isn't enough, we don't think, to just come in today and sell 50 homes next year. We really think that a stimulus program similar to the one I described would be a huge benefit to the city, and I think if anyone was interested to talk to Menucha about it, they recently renewed it all the way till 2013, because they were so happy with the success. I mean, you give up a little bit in your permit fees upfront, but I don't know what the lifetime value of a new resident in Yorkville would be, but it has to be in the several hundred thousand dollar range, you know, for $5,000, your increased tax base. You guys all know the map on how it's figured out. So before we invest another $2 million, though, in either one of these two properties, which is what about the price tag would be, we were hoping to have the program in place so we can move forward confidently, and we don't want to move forward on any project where we don't think we can have a really good shot at success. We've had too many years of just sitting on our hands, kind of, just hoping and praying, and as we all know, that's not a business plan. So that's pretty much it in Cliff's Notes versions. I can answer any questions that you guys may have, and also visit, invite anybody to come out and visit us in Menucha, we're about 20 minutes down, 47, shoot over to Ridge Road, and you can get there pretty quickly. Also, anything, any community that we go into, we would not be asking for any deviation from the covenants, or the restrictions, or the brick requirements, square footage requirements. We don't believe, as some big builders did, of squeezing things until, you know, the cry uncle, kind of, we want to, we want to be good neighbors to the few homeowners who are in those existing subdivisions, as well as be a net positive for the city, not a drag in any way. But we think it's a really important program to give buyers that extra incentive over purchasing a foreclosure or short sale. Again, I do all the sales, so when I'm exploring the granite, and the hardwood, and the basements, and the Energy Star, people's eyes kind of glaze over, they think, yeah, whatever. But when I mention the $10,000, for whatever reason, people's eyes kind of light up, and they start, you know, talking to each other, husband and wife, we could, you know, put a pool in with that, we could, that could cover a fence, that could pay for our moving expense, we could save that, we could pay the mortgage down, we could take a vacation, we could pay whatever debt or bills. So it's a really, for whatever reason, from an emotional marketing standpoint, I feel it's a very powerful tool, and, like I said, I'll open the floor up to any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns?
The only problem that I would have, I think it's a great idea, I think that we need to do something, I don't like the front funding of any outsourced inspections at all, because we've gotten, we've had issues with front funding things, so, is there any way that we can get a deposit for those, any of those inspections? I mean, that's...
Plan review inspection fees are small enough costs where that's not a problem.
Yeah, I just don't think that we should put out any money at all, our house would be out.
Chris, do you want to say something?
Yeah, actually, that amount may be limited, due to some staff changing, so that those costs now will be in-house and be covered by our building inspector's salary, so a lot of that won't have to be outsourced. So typically, the only inspection we outsource is plumbing.
That'll still have to be outsourced, correct?
Not necessarily so, in the future, no.
But, yeah, we, as on this side of the fence, we'd be okay with the inspection fees, they're minimal enough. And again, one thing I just failed to mention also, we would want this program to be open to all builders. We think, kind of, we hope more builders come up and pick up more distressed lots, we're confident enough in our product and our pricing, where we think all boats kind of rise with the rising tide, and, you know, if Pulte wants to implement it, or whoever else is still building in town, I think that would be great, you know?
Well, and I think you hit the nail on the head with one of my main concerns, was I didn't want this to be seen as some sort of program that would just favor your company. I mean, I believe in a free market, if it's there for one company, it's there for everybody, and then you guys can compete accordingly and let the market adjust itself. So the proposal, you know, there's obviously a proposal by staff of 30 building permits, which that could go up or down, depending on what we decide to do, but let's say we go with 30, that would be for everybody, correctly, wouldn't just be for this builder, and it would be first come, first served.
Correct.
But it's still, so, we would be funding 150, in essence, $150,000 in incentives, and reducing connection fees and things like that as well. So it's not, it's not, that's not included in the savings to the homeowner?
The only reduction that we're proposing in an actual fee is the municipal building impact fee. The builder will still pay all of the normal connection fees and impact fees at whatever they're in for each subdivision, so, you know, each subdivision...
But they pay it at the time of occupancy, not at the time of building.
Correct, and that's when the check will get issued, so, upon occupancy.
Are we doing general comments, are we done with the speaker, or...
General comments, or are you going to start answering any questions, or whatever you want to do?
I'm asking you, you're running the show.
General comments are fine.
I'll sit down, maybe a second question, if I can.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, here's the deal, let's be honest, I've seen the plumbing inspections go through, I know what they cost, I know we're going to have more of those. I just don't feel that building and development is driven by stimulus packages, you know, and, yeah, especially at the potential risk of the taxpayers, and that's really what we're looking at here. I believe permits and development are driven by markets, they're driven by the economy, they're driven by demographics, and, you know, I've been in this business for, in the construction business in my other life, for some time, and I know what drives growth. I believe we're forfeiting revenues, and impact will be minimal until the economy recovers, and that's the end of story. You know, our city has been stung enough by past administrations not collecting developer deposits and striking deals with developers at the taxpayers' expense, and this is not a matter of, of, you know, being business friendly or not, this is a matter of learning from our past. You know, Yorkville's been stung, and our city's not in the financial position to front fund permits, we're not in the financial position to front fund inspections, and engineering, at this time. Look at our budget, it's just not there. Developers that are in good financial, good, sound financial condition, see the positives to building in Yorkville, and are already doing so, they're moving forward now, they're positioning themselves, right now, as we speak, without this in place, to be positioned, to be in a good position when the market and the economy recover, and be invested in Yorkville. And, you know, basically, you know, I don't think you're going to see any added growth when you're competing against, and let's be honest, it's tough for any builder to compete against foreclosures. I don't care whether it's 5,000 or 10,000, foreclosures are tough to compete against, and I just think we're giving away revenues, and that's really what we're doing here. You know, I believe that by considering this, will be, will have little to no added impact on growth, is my belief, and, you know, reducing revenues is what we'll really be doing, and other than already moving forward, and, you know, the developers already moving forward in Yorkville, I don't think there's going to be any added impact. I think the ones that are in play now, that have the property now, that are positioning themselves to go in Yorkville, are going to move forward, whether this is in place or not. And ultimately, once again, if we haven't learned from the past administrations, we're ultimate looking at putting the taxpayers' money at risk, because we don't have the funds to front fund any of this. If you can tell me where that is in the budget, I'd love to know.
Any other comments, questions?
I got a question, what would we be front funding if they're going to pay for the...
Plumbing inspections, permit fees, engineering, those are three major expenses that we'd be front funding.
Actually, there's a clause in there that says, the permit would have to be issued within one year, so the fee would have to be paid within one year.
For front funding from six months to a year, tell me where it is in the budget.
The only inspections that we outsource right now is plumbing, we do in-house plan review, that may be, that may be changing in regards to in-house plumbing inspections, and the only other building permits that we collect are for the ones listed that are city-related fees, so if we hold off on those fees until the time of building, final occupancy, the only thing we would possibly be front funding is if we had to outsource any plan review or inspection.
Just for clarification, outsourced plumbing inspections would typically cost for a house?
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars, and engineering inspections, would there be any?
Sidewalk inspection at final, but we've been able to do that in-house.
Okay, so that's no, there's no invoice generated as a result of that?
No.
And what was the last one?
Well, any other, any other fees that were listed?
Plan review fees, typical plan reviews fees for a house.
It depends, when we outsource to B&amp;F, they're about $900, but in-house, we can, we can review plans.
You know, I'm sorry, but what amazes me here is, we've been hearing everything about being very tight with staff, we don't have a lot of time to do all these extra things, and all of a sudden, we're going to put all these added responsibilities on staff that we haven't been doing before, and still, the end result is, we're still front funding, and more than front funding, we are delaying our revenues that would normally come in from six months to a year, and the impact is going to be minimal. And I just, like I said, these type of stimulus packages, if you look at history, they don't do anything. If a developer is going to really invest in Yorkville, they're going to invest in Yorkville because of the market, the economy, and the demographics, and that's it, period. Until that stuff comes back, they're not going to spend the money it takes to build homes and invest. They're smarter than that, that's what they do for a living. So I just hope you all consider that, because if you haven't learned anything, at least we've learned one thing from the past, all these deals that were cut with the developers in the past administrations have hurt us real bad, and if we continue to make those deals and strike those deals, we're going to continue to put this city at risk, and I think that's, that's something we ought to consider.
Just to clarify, we weren't necessarily proposing to change any of our plan review processes or outsourcing inspections as a result of this program. There are some other factors at play, which we can get into at a separate meeting, but we would have to cover the costs of whatever, you know, EEI had to do, if they had to do it for a house, if we had to have an outsourced plan review, or a plumbing inspection, so those would be costs that we're proposing right now, that the city would cover basically for six months to a year. So you could take that part out of the plan if you really wanted to.
That's what I'm thinking.
So I know that Menucha, and I believe Sugar Grove, who implemented this, do cover the entire cost of the, of, you know, whatever inspections, basically, until occupancy.
Yeah, a lot of communities, Plainfield right now, they delay permit fees until time of occupancy, that, that's been a strategy that a lot of communities have been implementing the last couple of years, actually.
Can I respond to a couple of those questions? Sure. I think there's something in the logic of the argument that you're forfeiting revenues that would come anyways. The logic that you said, the three things, demographics and economy and whatever, are the only considerations for somebody to come into a town and build, aren't necessarily the case. It might have been those were the driving ones before, and they still are, but a stimulus is absolutely... But a stimulus is absolutely, in our experience, something that we did find to be absolutely beneficial from somebody, there was Centex down the road who, for whatever reason, did not opt to offer it. And buyers would come to us, cancel a contract there, and purchase it. I can point you to at least eight or nine of our customers who the only reason they found us wasn't through our website or any of our marketing, was because they were looking for foreclosures and short sales in the area, saw our sign, said, "What the heck? Let's give it a shot. We know new homes are, no one's buying them these days, but let's go see." And, and it is a tough sell in a sense against the foreclosure, but you can lessen the dollar amount by the time, people aren't stupid either. Neither builders aren't, I agree. Neither are city councils. Neither are, uh, uh, buyers aren't either. When they go through a house, okay, say that's $130,000 and they see the furnace is broken, the people rip the copper out of the walls and the toilets are gone, the carpet is stained with, you know, cat and dog, whatever. And all these things add up to 20, $30,000 where they could go across the street, not for me, forget me, buy it from a, 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 a whole, a brand-new home with a warranty from a builder that's going to stand behind his work and they can choose everything they want. There is a compelling argument there. And we started with a hope and a prayer, let's try it, and it worked. And, um, you know, there's a lot more to it. You're not giving up anything. What you're doing is positioning yourself to get a buyer who would just occupy, you're getting, you're giving yourself a better shot to get a new resident to Yorkville to take up one of your 9,000 vacant lots. You have 9,000 of them out there. And if this isn't worth a shot, to give 30 of them a shot, I don't really know what you're risking. It's not a special assessment where you're on the hook for tens of millions of dollars. What it amounts to is, are 30 new buyers worth $5,000 apiece in reduced fees? You're going to get zero of those fees if no one builds here anyways. It's not like it's revenue guaranteed to come in. You're going to get zero of those dollars. Why not get, and your permits aren't cheap, by the way. Permits are about $19,000 per permit. In Menucha, I'm paying 12 and 13. And other, in, in Plainfield, I could buy lots right now for $30,000 and pay $8,000 because their grandfather did, in a very nice development. So, it's not like the, the, the permits are cheap. We're not asking for anything unreasonable. But if you, if you do want to see growth, if you do want to see, the status quo isn't working and, and many people just to keep in waiting. I saw a study yesterday that home prices and, and volume aren't coming back to where they were until 2023. So, it's, it's really, in our view of, um, you know, is it worth, is it worth the shot? Could I sell zero? Maybe. Do I think that's going to be the case? I wouldn't be here, uh, and we wouldn't be risking our substantial amount of capital if we did think that that was the case.
I agree. I mean, you're not forfeiting any revenue. Revenue's not coming in yet. And if developers moving forward, I sure don't see it. I mean, I went to the opening of the model in BlackBerry 18 months ago. That model is still sitting there and hasn't sold. You know, so, Marty?
Uh, yes. My opinion is, again, we, like, some of you have just said earlier, we have too many vacant lots sitting around and we need to do something to start this. There's no, no revenues without new construction. And we're not losing fees if nobody builds. If the lots are vacant, we're not, we're not gaining money. We're not, we're not losing money just sitting there. There were some bad deals in the past, I agree, but we can't let past bad ideas and votes cloud each new idea. We got to judge them individually. So, just because there were some bad deals or bad things in the past with developers doesn't necessarily mean this is a bad one or a good one. So, we can judge this equally. And for 30 houses, to give it a shot to see if it works, I'm all for it. Chris?
Yeah, this is something, this is, this is economic development as well. We're talking 30 homes here, but we have to also think beyond the rooftops. If we can bring in rooftops, we're also bringing in retail business. We're possibly renewing more leases on our business districts that if we don't see growth coming back in here, we're going to start losing some of our tenants. It's going to have major dollar effects. Those are the bigger issues that we have financially is if we start losing some of our business tenants, we're going to lose a lot more in our tax base. This is, it's 30 homes. It's $150,000. We're holding funds, as you said, for six to 12 months. They're small dollars, but it has potential to renew and continue the interest in our community. I know you disagree with that, but it does have potential. This is a smaller piece than what many communities have done. We are being cautious on this with only taking it at 30. And, you know, it's, it's a small piece, but I do think this does have a positive benefit to our community if we make this happen.
And it's a proven plan. Arbor Lakes is what, the second fastest-growing subdivision in Chicagoland area?
Yes. Arbor Lakes is the second fastest-selling community in Chicagoland, from all the way Wisconsin to Indiana as it sits. And again, we're a small family business. My father is the owner and the architect. So, we have some things going for us where we can customize and improve and tweak plans and stuff. But, uh, yeah, we, we, we hope to, you know, keep, keep that continued success.
Ruth?
I have a question for you. Are you going to be pricing your homes about $169,000?
No.
In the developments you'd be looking at?
No, they'd be, they'd be higher than that, but we, and even the developer who were, the mayor mentioned of BlackBerry was, they put a product in there at the mid-300s. And when we've been negotiating with him, he said, "There's no way that houses are going to sell in the mid-300s. They need to be 200,000 and less starting prices," he feels. I think the price is probably where Pulte is at, is kind of a good baseline. We include a lot more amenities and features per home, but that, that kind of pricing is probably where maybe the 180s, 190s before the incentive is where we would anticipate beginning.
Because we do have several local builders that are custom-built homes. And if you come in and kind of lowball your prices and they already have lots here, that's going to be really rough competition for them.
Yeah. I don't know what to say. I mean, maybe you want to look and see how many? I think there were 30 building permits issued last year. So, again, if, the custom is not head-to-head competition typically with the semi-custom products that we offer. But as, the names of all of our subcontractors are written on their trucks, they're more than welcome to hire them and call them and see how we do it. And we're an open book. I honestly do believe, I'm not cut through competition. I think everybody needs to prosper, but that's not my primary concern, kind of. It's, you know, making our individual projects a success.
Thank you.
Ruth, please.
Yeah.
George?
Just two things. One, I just don't believe it's the responsibility of the city to get involved in that market. I think you, I think that market needs to be ironed out by you. And, and more importantly is, and I've asked this question, nobody's answered me, tell me where in the budget we have the money to front fund any of these funds? I, I just want to know. I, I'm curious.
Sure. Uh, the inspection fees, I would front fund out of the inspection fee expense line item. Um, you know, if you were to implement this, yes, you'd probably go over budget for 30 homes by a slight amount. So, you'd be reducing whatever didn't get reimbursed to you within a year, whatever your surplus is for this year and potentially next year, depending on how long it takes to do that 30 homes. So, you know, I think Christie's estimate was that it could be, you know, upwards of $1,000 a home. That's if you have to do a plan review. A lot of the Centex subdivisions, Grand Reserve, they have master, master plans for homes so we don't have to re-review them each time. It could be as low as $40 or even zero.
And the other thing that, so besides not having the money in the budget, um, and I, I guess my question is, what, 30 homes, what did you sell since that, that package has been in place in Menucha? How many homes?
Uh, 47.
Total?
In 16 months, yeah.
In how long?
16 months.
Okay.
Since September 2010. So...
How many did you sell in six to a year?
Sorry?
How many month, how many did you sell in six to a year?
In six to a year?
Six months to one year.
Oh, in six months to one year? Well, we sold 40 in calendar 2012, uh, 11.
Is that when that was implemented in Menucha?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, besides not having the funds there, um, I, I guess if, if you look at, and what the part you don't know is, we don't have money for our streets. We don't have money for sewer. We don't have money to fix residents who have storm problems, who are flooding. We don't have the money for necessities and yet we're going to talk about front funding money that we don't have. And, and I just, like I've said over and over and over again, there has to be priority. And if, we can, we can say we're going to get it here and pull it there and get it there, so where are we going to pull the money to fix our roads? Where are we going to pull the money to fix our sewer? Where are we going to pull the money to fix the storm project in Sunflower that are seven or seven to nine homes that are flooding that we know there's a problem with? Where are we going to, where are we going to, where are we going to get that money? It seems like we can magically come up with money for some of these things when we want it, but these other things, we don't have it. So, once again, please, council, prioritize here. This is, let the free market iron itself out and let's concentrate on necessities.
You get that money by increasing your tax base.
Well, the front funding that you're talking about, George, is one thing, but the incentive of $5,000 per home, where's that coming from? Where's the $150,000 bucket of money coming from?
Sure. In the memo itself, there's a table that I would actually, uh-
Page two.
Uh, thank you. Page two of the memo would be the four fees and in the order that I would essentially reduce them. What happens is, again, that the builder pays them and then we cut the check and then we figure out where the individual breakdown is for that fee at a later date. It would be the water connection fee, the sewer connection fee, the building permit fee, and then the public works fee in that order. So, it doesn't necessarily mean that all four of them would be affected. It could be the first two if there's a subdivision where the water connection fee is 3,700. Christie did provide a table that shows the water connection fee in the different developments too. I would actually say, and again, this doesn't have to be actually decided now. You can decide this during the budget season that we're about to enter into, to throw the municipal building impact fee on there too. You don't have any expenses budgeted out of that fund for the next five or six years. And currently, it's sitting in deficit from this building, actually. So, that would be another one, since there's no ongoing capital or operational costs, that I'd recommend be added to that table. Again, we can decide that after the fact.
Greg?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I just got a question for staff. Now, when I read this, it seems to me there's a little bit of verification that comes into play here. For example, it has to be sold to somebody who's going to be a permanent resident. How do we verify that?
It would, it would be a person, individual that's buying the lot for occupancy as a resident. So, that's how we, we would verify that, that they would be on the tax roll, that they would be living as an occupant. It would be owner occupied.
Okay. And then the other thing, under section one, number, letter A, the certificate of occupancy has to be issued within one year of the day that the issuance of the building permit. What if that doesn't happen?
Then they don't get the benefits of the program. They, they have to pay all their fees for their occupancy and they, they will not get the benefit of the program of the, the $5,000 rebate from the city of the building permit fees.
I guess the big question is here, I mean, do you want to save the loans back? I mean, you've seen what happened to Lowe's over in North Chicago. What do you think is going to happen to Home Depot and general marketplace? You don't start adding families here and people here. I mean, Ed, Ed Mccambridge, we're talking about a one-year moratorium on fees. You know, I mean, this is a lot less drastic than that.
But Gary, this doesn't drive that. Market and the economy drive that, not this, not this program.
This, it sure drove it in Menucha.
I'd just like to say, if this doesn't drive it, we're not out anything, anyway.
Right. We are, though.
No, we're not.
No. If a permit doesn't come in, we're not out of delaying fees or refund, or refunding. If a permit does come in, now we have a new resident to add to our tax roll. We have someone paying, uh-
But you're passing this expecting it to work, right?
Say that again?
You're passing this expecting it to work, right?
Hoping it works.
Well, if it works even minimally, we are out something. We are out for front funding. We're reducing fees and we're front, front funding inspections and other engineering costs that we don't have the money for.
And we're increasing sales tax when these people go to Famous Footwire to buy shoes for all their kids.
That's what I would say too, right? You can't be so short-sighted and not see what, what happens after the people move in. So, there's 30 new families that all go pay school taxes, go buy shoes, go to Kohl's and Home Depot because more than Kohl's, we are, we are schooling.
Where does that end though, Marty? I mean, the question then, then goes to where does that end? Do we start giving stimulus packages to commercials for bringing other things in? We, we just recently, I don't know, not too long ago, turned down a developer in Greenbrier, or Green, Briarwood, Briarwood, which is right next to my son, my, my, my subdivision, told them that we weren't going to reduce their fees because we didn't believe that it would, that we were, we thought we were putting ourselves at risk and therefore we didn't, he didn't build and, and we didn't get, get or lose anything from it. Where does all of this end?
To answer your question, it ends when the development starts coming in, like you said, like it should. In normal economies, I agree with you. We, we shouldn't need to incentivize any builder, you know, they don't come back to us, well, if he makes $20 million this year, $20 billion, he's not going to come back to Yorkville and go, "Oh, here's some money because, because I made all this extra money." That, that's in normal times. I agree completely with you. These are a little different. I'm not saying keep this program forever. We may do this, it might jumpstart 30 houses. The economy gets better, other builders come in, boom, we end it.
But even if it jumpstarts 30 houses and we can't pay for our streets and don't have it in our budget, how can you justify this?
So, do you want to see it sit like Briarwood? I mean, it's-
I'd rather see, like, the free market work itself out and make sure we concentrate on necessities. That's what I'd rather see. I, I don't see anybody in their right mind that can argue with that.
Diane?
I was just going to say, we don't see any other revenue coming in if we don't add rooftops and people to this town. And we need to, we need people here. We have all this going already. It started. We can't go back in time and change it back. We can't. We have to move forward.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, just, sir, how many people do you employ? How many people would you say you put to work in Menucha?
Direct employees, we have nine. But subcontractors, when I counted, because I was curious about this, I counted up kind of the guys who are there at least four days a week. There's over 50 people who are required, in addition to our nine direct employees, who need to be, who have full-time work, making good wages to build those 40 homes a year or so. So, and we'd already kind of started the interviewing process for a sales staff in anticipation, hoping that things work out in Yorkville. So, right off the bat, there would be one or two people hired for the sales and then the constructions, the trailing activity, three, four months later, you kind of ramp that up as well. So, yeah, we're proud that, that those, I think actually the National Home Builders Association says for every house you build, you add three jobs to the economy. I don't know how they figured it out, but that's what they're saying.
Carol?
You know, I'm, I'm very torn on this one, I'll be honest with you. I, I see both sides of it. I'm leaning towards George right now. I think what would make me a little more comfortable is, there's no end date in this program. If we're going to do it as a small test program with an end date where we're going to end this and then review it for a long-term program, I think that maybe that's more palatable. But just to do the program the way it is, based on the ordinance it's drafted, doesn't[1698.83] seem like there's any end date or, or, or cap on this besides the 30 per year, meaning it's 30 this year, 30 next year, 30 next year, and then it becomes a, you know, something that we can't rein in, I would be more comfortable if we had a short-term test program, 12 months, whatever you guys wanna do with an end date, we would review it and then decide if we're gonna do this as a long-term program. But as written, I don't think I would be comfortable passing it just open-ended, so...
And that's what Manuka did too. They said 30, and that's the number I threw out there, 'cause that's what they did.
Yeah, but I also wanna date, because 30 per year is gonna be two and a half years.
Yeah, that's what they did also. 30 or 12 months, whichever is...
Of course, of course.
All right. I see Mr. McHugh's up, I actually would like to hear what he has to say.
Two or four years, Sam.
I'd love to say that this program would be an excellent marketing tool for YEDC, smoking the businesses looking at our community. Many major retailers are looking to put new stores, retail locations in communities that have programs such as this, that we're about at the edge in offering something like this. It's something that they look at. If we're not doing something that's out of the box to create, to stimulate residential development and additional rooftops in our town, many retailers will just chuck us off the list and not consider us for future locations. As I said months before, it used to be that there were many locations of retail stores in many towns that we're trying to attract them. Now, there is a very few amount of retailers that are out there looking at additional sites in a lot of towns. So, right away, the, the, the towns that are being aggressive to get additional rooftops built will be really very, very beneficial on the commercial side of attracting these stores.
George? We've heard that story over and over again, and I'll give you a prime example of that story being heard over and over again. We heard that from YEDC and we heard the petitioner and the attorney from Blackberry Woods tell us if we froze fines and froze the codes, that they would build like crazy in there. You know how many homes have been built since we approved that? One. One home. It's not driven by that. It's driven by the economy.
I can tell you for a panel of yours that every retailer that I speak with asks about this first and foremost. So, we have to come up with the right equation and maybe this is bringing us closer to the right equation to get the rooftop started. Yesterday, we get, in 2011, we get 40 some homes, 43 permits that were issued. It's not enough to make a statement that we're being very aggressive, that we want to see additional rooftops. And maybe this is what gets us there, what we need to do to break the magic, one, one or number, but I think that's the number that retailers are looking to see.
Chris?
Alman Colismal asks if we could recognize Mr. McHugh. I second that. You have a third?
I think we need three.
Three or me?
Or you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, bud. Please state your name for the record.
Alman Q. I own Q Builders. I've been building in Yorkville, I think most you know, for about 20 years and the only way you're gonna bring money to Yorkville is rooftops. And I, I gotta, well, I gotta, I should be able to get a CD. I was at a seminar two years ago and the average house brings, I don't know if it's over 10 to 15 years, but it talks about the average house brings $160,000 to the community between real estate taxes, jobs, spending money in the community. To sit there and do nothing, you know, you're gonna be here 50 years from now and you're gonna have nobody in this room, you're gonna be right where you're at today. I mean, every town, whether, will be dropping their permits. They have to, because it, this is a long haul. You know, he made a comment about house values not coming back to 23. I mean, I've seen everything that, that comes across as far as information that the builders are getting today and they talk, the Great Depression, it took 17 years for the house values to come back. And there, why is this not, this is gonna take just as long. There's no reason why it'll be any quicker. This is a long haul. 15 years ago, permits were $3,000 here in Yorkville. A, a lot was $32,000. Today, you can buy a lot for $10,000. We're making less today than we did then. Permit fees in some subdivisions, I mean, could be up to 26, $27,000 here. How, how did they go from $3,000 to $27,000? Cities got greedy. Everybody got greedy, the developers. They just kept raising fees. It was easy to do. I mean, we gotta get back, fees should be free right now. That's the only way you're gonna bring money to this community. Is, 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 they should be free. And that's what the, this seminar I went to where this lobbyist talked about, that's where they should be. And, and you're gonna see it. It's, not that they're gonna be free, but they're gonna be dropping in other towns. I've used more local subcontractors than anybody. Who would've guessed that ProBuild would be gone? You know, Effie Wheaton, I used them from the day I started business, 20 years ago. They moved to Yorkville and then were sold to ProBuild. I mean, who would've ever imagined they'd be gone? There, there's not a lumber company, I think, within 30 miles of us right now. There's, you know, so, all the cities are gonna have to chug on the bandwagon and, you know, and do something. But to do nothing, I mean, my head's spinning from listening to all this stuff and, but fees have to come down. You know, and, and again, the rooftops are taxed, the taxes, I mean, every house we build, even right now, we're building three of them, Heartland Circle, two of them are three and a quarter, one's at 260, that's the cheapest house I think we built in maybe six, seven years. But that, that $260,000 house is still gonna have a 7, $7,500 tax bill. I mean, that's money that's coming. Like you say, I can't think, there's so many other things. I don't know if anybody's got any questions, but...
I have a question. Would you take advantage of this program?
Oh, yeah, it's a great deal, anything we do. And, and Rose, you made a comment, you know, I mean, I, I consider myself a semi-custom. I mean, we'll do anything from custom, but most of the stuff we do is semi. We, we have our plans, we'll modify them, but right now, I have no competitors. I mean, we're out for ourself. I mean, they're gonna build a different product than we are and we're typically a little bit higher in price and, you know, we might meet someone and we can't do it, we're, they'll go off to someone who builds lower end. The same fact, you know, they may have somebody meet with them that wants more stuff done that they don't do, we do that. So, that there's, you know, this is gonna be great for everybody, but the fees have to, have to be lower.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What, what happened over the other place? What, I mean...
In Blackberry?
Yeah. Why didn't that like?
Well, you know, I bought the land in 2005, developed it, was the first subdivision that I did. And, you know, I had one builder lined up to buy about 30 to 40 lots and, you know, by the time 06 came, we got the roads in and, and that's just when everything started to crumble, he backed out of the deal. You know, I, I said, I wasn't really prepared to come up here, but in, in 04, 5, and 6, I, I think, you know, I, I was building about 73 homes a year and, you know, 70% of them were here in Yorkville. And in Blackberry Woods, I think I built 14 homes, you know, in the three years that I was there. But, you know, when, you know, my cost was probably $70,000 a lot. And, you know, now, like you say, you can buy lots for $10,000, there was a lot that was listed at $9,500 for over a month in Yorkville. It was listed at that price and it finally went under contract, I don't know what price it sold for, but there was lots that are listed at 17,000, city lots. I bought a lot out at Whitetail for 22,000. You know, that lot sold in 06 for 2, 210. And is it a great deal? No. It's, it's the new world we're in. And if we leave these fees at $20,000, there ain't gonna be no money coming in.
But, Mr. McHugh, we were told by yourself and the other builder and, and the attorney and everybody else that if we froze those fees and froze, and froze the code, that there, that would spur on mass growth in Blackberry and it hasn't. It hasn't done anything, not anything for us.
How much did it hurt you?
Right.
Well, it, it hasn't hurt us, but this will hurt us, 'cause this, if it does, if, if this works like it's supposed to, we don't have any money. Our, our budget is, is deficit.
So, it won't be a good thing to have 30, 60 homes?
Well, that's like telling me, hey, I wanna go out and buy a Porsche and you know what, I'm $30,000 short of buying the Porsche, but go out and buy it anyway, I'll find money and you're down, down the line. I just don't run my finances like that. I don't think the city should either.
Well, I wasn't here with, I basically lost that property to the bank and Crestview Builders came in and bought it. And, you know, if, if you wanted to did something for them, they, they wouldn't even bought it. It'd be sitting there right now, it'd be tumbleweeds. I mean, there'd be nothing.
But that, but the point...
At least you've got a buyer, you've got somebody trying.
And I'm not trying to be competition with you, 'cause I agree with you on some of the other things, we've agreed on things in the past and we've disagreed as well, but the fact is, we heard the story that if we did that, just like we're hearing tonight, if we do this, it's gonna spur growth. And you know what we got out of it? Nothing. Nothing. We got nothing out of it.
I don't think there's any guarantees. Dropping a $5,000, is it gonna help? I, I, I think it is. It's, at least we're trying, but not to try. You know, did you watch football game last night? I, I don't think Southern, or LSU, they tried. I mean, they didn't try to change.
I, I know, and my, my belief is, this is a free market and, and the city can't put the taxpayers at risk for that sort of a, of a venture. And that's what, when you, when you spend money that you don't have for, it's like an Obama stimulus package. When you spend money that you don't have to try to stimulate something, I find that, that concept wrong. Whether it stimulates you or not, if you don't have the money, you don't spend it.
So, you don't think it'd be a good thing to have 60 new homes built next year?
I think it'd be a great thing, but I think you need, the free market has to iron that out. I don't think we can wait it out.
When we tried that back, when we tried it with, around your time, you're right, that was right when everything was tanking.
I wasn't in there when we did anything. I was out when that, when you guys did it for Ron. I, I wasn't part of it.
What, what the owner of that company who bought Blackberry Woods the first time says, he just came in and the price was, that was too high. The $5,000 make a difference for him though. He's a custom builder on a neighborhood who's accustomed to building million-dollar houses. He's not in distress or anything to sell them to the dirt cheap. He's selling them to the above-market value, but he just doesn't, it's not worth it to him to try and build a house for $200,000, which is what he said he thinks they need to be at, to actually sell. But in my, in my view, you know, with, with, the city's not risking a single tenant in this area. They really aren't, because what's 0% or what's 100% of 0? It's 0. What's 75 or actually 90% of $20? That's what the city would be gaining. If it works, I can guarantee you I would have built 40 homes here, here in Yorkville. What I laid out at the beginning was all the reasons I'm willing to risk millions of dollars to try because of the past recent success and favorable factors here in Yorkville that logic kinda leads us, our family's company, to think that if it worked there, it should work in a better location. So, that's, that's hard.
All right. Any new comments?
Just one thing, you mentioned at EDC that this was so successful in Manuka, they actually extended it. Is that, is that what I...
Yeah, but there are members of the Manuka City Council who are very conservative individuals, very conservative stewards of the city's finances, who are huge skeptics on the first study. And I think they need involvement to the meeting. The building inspector called me before Thanksgiving, saying, you know, until 2013, it was an internal thing, conservative being ones, I guess we call them, the ProBuild, the liberal ones, all agree that it was a net benefit to the city and they even wanna see us stop. So, that's why I doubt what the council can do with the effort that we do. We used to go down that route and then we're...
Not that I wouldn't argue, but I've researched in this Manuka program. One of the aldermen or trustees up there, they called every buyer to see if this $10,000 was a factor in their buying decision. And I thought he reported to the council over there that in 100% of the cases, that was a determining factor.
I think the building inspector, he was feeling the effects. When I asked him, I went with Congress lead, with the news and everything, and he told me, I said, the buyers said we built a bigger house, but the $10,000 was kind of what sealed it. So...
Well, I just, to do nothing, it's gonna get worse. I mean, I used law title from the, the time they came out here in Yorkville. I mean, who never would imagine they would've closed down? I think they had six to seven offices. You know, more businesses are gonna close if no rooftops come. And I, I guess, I don't understand how $150,000 in permit fees is, is gonna hurt you when you're gonna be getting the tax dollars coming back. You know, I, I don't think $5,000's enough to drop it. I, I thought it should be more like $10,000. But I, I know you're gonna see communities around you that are gonna do it and, you know, it, it's gonna happen, because this is, this is a long haul. When, when land prices are, like you say, at $10,000, I mean, it, prices have to drop. But to do nothing is not the answer. Thank you.
All right. Let's wrap this up.
All right. I just wanted to see if we can make an amendment to the motion.
Let's revise any scottles. Anyone make an amendment?
As long as somebody makes it.
Make amendment to put a 12-month term.
Be earlier off 30.
30 permits are 30, or a 12-month term. So, motion, any second?
Second.
12 months from point of...
12 months from passage, which would be today.
Right. Any comments or questions on the amendment? Roll call on the amendment.
Tealy?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Buckhouser?
Aye.
Woschuski?
Aye.
Okay. Roll call on the amended original motion. Did I say that right?
Yes.
That's amended, correct?
That's amended.
So, first was the amendment, now it's... Now, we're going on...
To the motion on the amendment, the original.
Yes, amended.
No motion as amended.
Nay.
Colosimo?
Nay.
Buckhouser?
Aye.
Woschuski?
Aye.
Tealy?
Aye.
Gilson?
Nay.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Public Safety Committee report. There is none. Administration Committee report, there is none. Park Board, anything?
No report.
Plan Commission's report. I undertake a motion to approve an ordinance approving an amendment to the annexation agreement in Plano, developing agreement, grant reserve subdivision, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute. Question's coming to this. Roll call, please.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Buckhouser?
Aye.
Woschuski?
Aye.
Tealy?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
No ZBA?
No.
No city...
Oh, I'm sorry, you...
I just assumed there was none. No City Council report? Uh, there is a city clerk's report. I undertake a motion to approve a resolution to release closed session minutes and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
So...
Second.
Comments or questions under the closing closed minutes? Roll call, please.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Buckhouser?
Aye.
Woschuski?
Aye.
Tealy?
Aye.
Gilson?
Park Board, anything?
No report.
Frank and Miss Shain's report. I will entertain a motion to approve an ordinance approving an amendment to the annexation agreement in Flaming Unit of Government Agreement, Grand Reserve Subdivision, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second.
Questions, comments, or issues on releasing closed minutes? Roll call, please.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosseumel?
Aye.
Munkhazer?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Tealay?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosseumel?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Tealay?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Public Safety Committee report, there is none. Administration Committee report, there is none. Park Board, anything?
No report.
Frank and Miss Shain's report. I will entertain a motion to approve an ordinance approving an amendment to the annexation agreement in Flaming Unit of Government Agreement, Grand Reserve Subdivision, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second.
Comments or questions on releasing closed minutes? Roll call, please.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosseumel?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Tealay?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Public Safety Committee report, there is none. Administration Committee report, there is none. Park Board, anything?
No report.
Frank and Miss Shain's report. I will entertain a motion to approve an ordinance approving an amendment to the annexation agreement in Flaming Unit of Government Agreement, Grand Reserve Subdivision, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second.
Comments or questions on releasing closed minutes? Roll call, please.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosseumel?
Aye.
Munkhazer?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Tealay?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Public Safety Committee report, there is none. Administration Committee report, there is none. Park Board, anything?
No report.
Frank and Miss Shain's report. I will entertain a motion to approve an ordinance approving an amendment to the annexation agreement in Flaming Unit of Government Agreement, Grand Reserve Subdivision, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second.
Questions, comments, or issues on releasing closed minutes?
Home, second.
Questions, comments, or issues on releasing closed minutes? Roll call, please.
Spears?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Colosseumel?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Tealay?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Munkhazer?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Tealay?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Tealay?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Tealay?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Tealay?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Motion passes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.